The Huntsville City Council Meeting is now in session. If you were to have an electronic device that could disrupt this proceeding, please turn it off or put it in a silent mode. As always, thank you so kindly for your help. Also, will you stand if you choose for the invocation led by Mr. Kelly McCauley and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance led by the Chair?
Dearly beloved, as we gather this evening with our city's officials, administrators, concerned citizens, let's be reminded of words from the author of our nation's constitution. A pure democracy is a society consisting of a small number of citizens who assemble and administer the government in person. Very recently, we completed an election in this city, a process whereby larger number of citizens can participate in matters of civic responsibility. We should be mindful then that the voices in this room carry the weight of many. We should be mindful of the concerns of all citizens in the community in addition to those who assemble here. Let's be encouraged to resolve matters of public importance by speaking to and with each other rather than at one another. A kind word turns away wrath. This small assembly relative to our town should encourage a humble discourse, an orderly and friendly conversation whereby the needs and concerns of our city are sorted and dispatched. Embracing humility will promote trust and openness and genuine concern for the well-being of others. But let's not let humility overburden our feelings. Let's enjoy a judicious garnish of pride whenever success appears. When we pull together, we have a strong city and a fine place to raise a family and conduct business. May I leave you with some more words from James Madison. The happy union of these states is a wonder, their constitution a miracle, their example the hope of liberty throughout the world.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you, Mr. McCauley, for those words. And we're now at approval of minutes, council members. You have before you an electronic copy of the minutes from our regular scheduled council meeting, August 11th, 2016. Are there any corrections or revisions? Hearing none, the minutes will stand as recorded. Also, we had a special hail council session, August 18th, 2016. You have those minutes before you. Are there any revisions or corrections on those minutes? Hearing none, they will stand, the minutes will stand as recorded. We're now at Agenda Item Number Four, Resolutions and Special Recognitions. Mayor Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask our Chief of Police to come up, Mark McMurray, we have some special presentations tonight. And Chief, you have some people that we need to recognize and honor, don't you?
Yes, sir. First of all, let me ask Officer Gargalinski and Officer Rickemball, come up here, please. We have, both of them brought their families with them tonight, and some of my command staff over here to recognize these two officers. First officer, here's my right's Officer Gargalinski, and then next to him's Officer Rickemball. What happened on April 24th was there was a hang-up, 911 hang-up call. We get them all the time. They arrived at a home and found a man armed with a semi-automatic handgun pointed at his head. They talked to him. Officer Gargalinski here had a rapport with him and tried to talk him out of committing suicide. The man finally gave up and actually he pulled the trigger and tried to shoot himself in the head. Luckily, the gun did not fire. Officer Gargalinski had less than a second to decide what to do as he tried to chamber another round in the weapon. He jumped on him, tried to disarm him. They struggled over the fight. Andrew Rickemball, next to him, jumped into the fight as well. The gun did discharge and it shot the man in the hand. The bullet went through the suspect's hand, and they were able to struggle the firearm away from him. Both officers went home safe, and the man went to the hospital, put a couple Band-Aids on his hand, and he's fine now, getting medication he needs. So it was a very brave act on both of them, and because of that, I'm very proud to recognize Officer Gargalinski with this award that we have. It's one of the highest awards you can get in the Huntsville Police Department. It's recognition of exemplary service through the conscientious act of saving another man's life. It's the HPD Life Saving Medal. And very few officers get this during their career, but you certainly deserve it. Thank you.
Want to present it, Chief? I'll hold the microphone.
Thank you, sir. Officer Rickemball also receives a certificate of commendation for jumping in the air and coming to his buddy's rescue. Thank you so, so much. Appreciate both of y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You can have a seat. And Officer, our next, next one is a Purple Heart. These are very rare. Ricky McCarver, will you come forward, please? This one gave us all a real big scare. On December 11th, Officer Ricky McCarver was dispatched to the area right down here on Church Street in reference to a person throwing rocks at vehicles. And after driving around, he recognized a subject that looked like the person they called on, so he stopped and had a talk with him. Well, the person became a little bit, didn't want to talk after a few minutes, and so Officer McCarver tried to take the subject into custody. They began in a fight in which he was blindsided, knocked cold, unconscious to the ground, and the man jumped on top of Officer McCarver and continued to strike him in the face. The injuries were so severe that the, the trauma almost killed him, and the, the blood was rushing into his lungs. Luckily, and I want to call two more people up here to the front, if you don't mind, Tommy Brown and Mark Wampler. Mark Wampler works for the, this happened at the bus station on Church Avenue, and he works there. This is Mark here. When Mark saw what happened, he went to the officer's assistants immediately, told the man, got the man off of him, grabbed the officer's radio, and started screaming for help. "I'm at the bus station, you got an officer injured." And that's what got us all coming immediately. At that time, Tommy Brown, the Director of Transportation here, he's our department head, he is a former EMT trained with HEMSE, and he knows his medical training. He came out and realized Officer McCarver was actually suffocating in his own blood because all his, the bones were broken in his face. So he immediately started first aid, saved his life, got breathing started, came back. And Ricky had to go through some very extensive surgery in his face, get some plates put in his face, and rebuild his whole front sinus and his nose section. So this is a Purple Heart to commemorate what happens, not too often luckily, but says in recognition of the sacrifice of sustaining serious personal injury in the line of duty while performing exemplary service to the community and to the Huntsville Police Department. Ricky McCarver, this is a Purple Heart for you. Thank you. Before we go, I want to give a special certificate to Tommy Brown. Tommy, this doesn't happen too often. We're usually helping other people, but when someone comes and helps us, we have a citizen's certificate and a commendation for Tommy Brown and Mark Wampler, and this is, of course, signed by me, but it's an appreciation for all the members here at City Council, the Mayor, the City Administrator, and all of us appreciating you rendering assistance to an officer in need. Thank you, brother.
Tommy Brown, who's leaving here, has been on the HEMSE Board for probably about thirty or forty years, haven't you, Tommy? But he is, he's been a great member of the HEMSE Board, and he was formerly a HEMSE, a member of HEMSE, and has done a great job with making sure that our community is safe, and we're reappointing him tonight. So if you stay around a little bit later, you will hear Tommy Brown get reappointed to another six-year term on the HEMSE Board. And Tommy, thank you for your service to the community. We also have, Chief, did you take my last, could I have Steve Ivey come up? We have, we want to recognize a golfer who is in the crowd tonight, and I know her dad is, is very proud of her and has been out there helping to train her. Forget everything your dad tells you and do with the process, and you'll do very well.
Could I have you to come on up, Michaela, please? Mayor, while she's walking up, I want to start talking because I have a long impressive resume that she has here. She started playing golf when she was two years old. In 2015, she won the Girl State Championship as the youngest player ever at the age of thirteen. She's also been named to the American Junior Golf Association. This past year, she not won her first, but she won her second state championship at the age of fourteen, where she helped Huntsville High win their first state championship. And she was six-under in that match. Then the summer, not to be outdone, she went out and won the state amateur. She went with a round, in her final round of seventy-two, which included a birdie to win the Twenty-Six Annual Women's Amateur Straight Choke Play. Currently, she is ranked second in the class of 2020. She is number thirty-seven overall by Golf Weekly, and at the grand age of fourteen, she's done accepted a scholarship with the University of Alabama.
Michelle, congratulations, and we look forward to great things. We're going to have you up here a bunch more times so we can give you other awards as you, as you earn those. So thank you so much.
Congratulations. Job well done. Council members, we do not have any items for adoption and presentation, any other special recognition, any announcements. We're now at Agenda Item Number Five, Business Without Side Legal Representation. Five A is the Council's decision regarding the personnel hearing for an employee of Public Works. We held this hearing and special hearing on August the 18th. Council members, are you prepared to vote on this item whether or not to uphold the Department of, the Personnel Hearing's Officer's Decision? So, Mr. Russell, how do you vote, sir?
First, I'll move that we uphold the decision of the Department Head.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Robinson.
And I vote aye.
Vote aye.
Mr. Kling.
Aye.
Dr. Showers.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. The Personnel Hearing Officer's Decision is upheld. We're now at Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearings. Now is the time and place for the following public hearings. Six A is a public hearing to be held. Six A one, public hearing for Transcity Cab and Airport Shuttle LLC doing business as Big Blue Airport Shuttle for the issuance of an airport shuttle license. This was set August the 11th, 2016, at a regular council meeting. Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, this is an existing taxi cab company that wishes to expand their business to, to an airport shuttle service. This license, if you approve it after the hearing, will authorize them to transport passengers to and from airports within two-hundred-and-fifty miles of Huntsville, primarily Birmingham, Nashville, that sort of thing. So it's in order, the background checks have been done, so it's in order for your consideration after the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the council on this particular matter? State your name and address for the record, please.
Route Timberlake 2117, Acton Drive, Huntsville, Alabama 35810. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I rise in opposition to this as I did the last council meeting. It seemed to be a proliferation of these cab companies going out to, to the airport, picking up passengers. But there's no, there's been nothing told about the benefits of having competition. And I'd like to hear something about what has been done in the research because there could be a saturation point to which we may have already passed, and it could, instead of being of a benefit to the city, it could be deleterious, and I think that is not something that's good for the city. It could lead to a lot of problems. As you well know, airports are very strained now trying to maintain security and everything. So having these taxis, all of them going out there, that, I think that adds on to some type of problem in the line of oversaturation and, and security at the airport. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. And Mr. Brown, would you like to comment on Mr. Timberlake's response?
Mr. President, I'd just say this, that the original company that started this business transporting to the outlying airports went out of business about six months ago. Since then, there have been two other companies that have come in to fill that void, they're private businesses. We simply license them under our vehicle for higher ordinance, oversee them, inspect vehicles, and that sort of thing. So they're privately owned companies responding to, to what they perceive as a public need and, so that, that's what we have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Further discussion? Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dr. Showers. Further discussion? Mr. Kling.
Mr. Brown, I guess I'm all for free enterprise. I know this is the second one of these we've had in the last couple of weeks, but isn't this kind of self-defeating to hurt our own airport that we're, you know, encouraging people to fly out of? I'm kind of pulled two ways on this thing.
Well, I guess I could offer an opinion on that. There, these companies are in business to serve people who are going to other airports that elect to fly out of other airports, so that's, that's what they're doing. That's...
We, I guess, Mr. President, concern I've got, every, I guess everybody kind of remembers that several years ago, we participated, I think with, with the Chamber of Commerce and some other groups to put up a couple million dollars to get a low-cost air carrier to fly out of Huntsville. And, and they did for a while, but then they got merged in with Southwest, and that kind of went away. And we try to support our local industries and businesses, but to me, this would be similar to just, you know, encouraging people, instead of going to Huntsville Hospital, you know, go to a hospital in Birmingham for your surgery, or something like that. So I just kind of wonder, you know, if we're doing what we should be doing even though, you know, there is, you know, free and open competition, certainly a valid argument.
Any further discussion? So, Mr. Brown, we're not per se encouraging people. You're, you're, what I'm hearing you say, if I understand correctly, Mr. Kling certainly has made a very important point, but these are folk who probably have chosen to fly from other airports anyway, is that?
That, that is correct, Mr. President. This, this will serve only people who choose not to fly out of Huntsville. Obviously, we hope that people will use Huntsville Airport, but this gives them a private sector provided option if they choose to fly out of another airport in the region.
And to further piggyback on Councilman Kling's comment, in no way are we encouraging them to do that, as in the city of Huntsville.
Absolutely not. We're simply licensed them, licensing these providers under our vehicle for higher ordinance as required by, by the city ordinance, and they will also be required to comply with Public Service Commission requirements and other federal and state requirements as well. So they have to jump through a lot of hoops, and they will be responding to a need of, of the public that we're certainly not going to encourage to, to use other airports, but people will do that, and this will help them get that done.
Okay, all right. So any further discussion, council members?
Do we know how much they're going to be charging, like, let's say hypothetically Nashville, or how much round trip Huntsville to Birmingham?
I do not, Councilman Kling. The ordinance is silent on that issue. I think the last company that came in was charging sixty-nine dollars a, a person.
Okay, so it's not like the taxi cab ordinance where we would have some control over the rules?
No, no, uh-uh. That's, that's correct.
Okay. Any further discussion, council? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
With Councilman Kling voting nay, it passes four to one.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Six A two is a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Ms...
I know, I'm not in my regular spot.
Yes, Jordan, yes.
Yes, Councilman Culver, this resolution identifies fifty-two properties that were in violation of the city's grass and weeds ordinance. All fifty-two owners received written notification that they were in violation of our ordinance and were given fourteen days to correct the violation. They all failed to respond, and as a result, I'm asking for your approval tonight to assess them the cost of cutting their properties.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anyone from the public wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Mr. Timberlake?
Mr. President, Route Timberlake 2117, Acton Drive, Huntsville, Alabama 35810.
Thank you, sir.
I rise in, in opposition for clarification because it seems like one of our public servants has made an oxymoronic statement. How can you say that they received a notice and yet the notice came back not seen? As you well know, I have appeared before this August body numerous of times to complain about the postal service that we allow to operate in this city unimpeded in a very unprofessional manner, violating the citizens' rights and privileges with our due process of law. To that end, I would like to know, how can you receive something and not receive it in the same vein? Thank you, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. And Ms. Jordan, if you choose, I know we've gone down this road numerous times before, and if I understand correctly, pursuant to what is required by the city of Huntsville and the department that you're managing, that U.S. Postal Mail is sufficient for that?
That's correct, and it's our expectation, just like it's everyone else's, when you mail something first-class, that it will arrive. If the address is correct, we get that information from the county courthouse, so we have every, you know, confidence that the process that we're following is fair and it does meet our ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anyone else from the public? Ma'am, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Gwen Trupmore Ragland.
And Ms. Ragland, if you'll pull the microphone down just a little bit, please, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Gwen Trupmore Ragland.
And your address, Ms. Ragland?
Thirty-two twelve Yale Circle.
Thank you, ma'am.
Huntsville, Alabama.
Thank you.
Several times, I've received letters about my property at thirty-two twelve Yale. What I had done was sprayed Roundup on my grass so it would be killed, and there was no grass there. However, I got a letter stating that they had fined me two hundred and some dollars. There's no grass to be cut. The house burnt down at first, then the house was blowed up. I was rebuilding the house, and someone decided to put a Krista Muff Lab in my house and blow it back up. I paid to have the property cleaned off, and they cut the grass and mowed the grass. There's no grass to be cut. However, there are houses in that area that look way worse than mine. Mine is just a vacant lot, and I'm asking you to rescind that fee of two hundred and whatever dollars, I don't remember the exact amount, because there's nothing there to fine me for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ragland. And Ms. Jordan, the city typically does not build until such time after the grass has been cut, is that correct?
That's correct, and I'm, I'm, I was listening to Ms. Trup, I believe. I, I don't see the, maybe she gave her address and not the address of the property, but I'm not seeing a property on Yale.
So in these fifty-two properties that you have identified, none of those reflect a thirty-two twelve Yale street address?
I, I don't see one. Is that, would you...
Ms. Ragland, in an attempt to help us to resolve this, and I want to ask Ms. Jordan, if you perhaps could get with her...
I'd be happy to.
And, and get to the bottom of it, perhaps?
Sure.
And if there were to be a change that is needed, then we can always come back to the council with that?
Sure, absolutely.
Is that okay?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. It's, it's okay.
Thank you. Thank you all. Anyone else from the public wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, Dr. Robinson.
So I was looking at these fifty-two properties and did some numbers. Eighteen, only eighteen percent of them are actually owner occupied. The rest are owned by people who don't live there. A third of them are out of state. One of them is out of country in Australia.
Yes, ma'am.
Two are deceased. One is a HUD property, and ten of them are owned by one individual who lives in Fort Lauderdale.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this typical of what you see?
Unfortunately, it is. I mean, you know, we have owners that are not local and that are not responsible, and unfortunately, we're in this position. It's not our desire to cut anyone's grass. And when it becomes a public nuisance to the surrounding property owners and starts to impact the quality of life for those individuals, we step in. So yes, this is, you know, week, or meeting after meeting, you, you see about forty, fifty properties, and the majority are, you know, folks who just are not local and, and up to the task of caring for their property.
Is there something we can do? Do you need tools that would help you better enforce this or prevent these sorts of situations from arising?
I believe after the new year, at the direction of Mayor Battle and, and the administration, we, we will have some tools for your consideration.
I, I know the Council of Neighborhood Association says expressed concern, and I'm assuming you're working with them on that.
We are, we are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Unfortunately, many of these will take state legislature action to, to do them, and we have been through the list of them time and time again. The habitual ones say the person with ten, ten properties who lives in Florida, those are the ones that we try to stay on top of and try to shorten the time as much as possible so that we can clean them up as quickly as possible because it's usually, we know that they're not going to come in and do it. So we will, time and time again, the reason you have fifty-two properties now is because community development is staying on top of them, staying very close on them, they're trying to make sure that neighbors are good neighbors. And, you know, we would ask that you, you support what community development is doing and also let the city be reimbursed for the money that we're having to spend to make sure that these people are good property, are good neighbors and good property owners. We don't, one, one bad house in one neighborhood can, can run a whole neighborhood, and I think everybody knows that. So we're trying to stay on them as close as possible.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. And Ms. Jordan, any further discussion, council?
Question. Ms. Jordan, I, I don't know if this is legal or, or not, but when y'all look at things, is there a way that an extra high penalty can be put on for out-of-town or out-of-county property owners, like the one in Fort Lauderdale?
Mr. Kling, I, I don't know that that'll be one of our tools, but we'll certainly bring you a good list of options that, you know, passes all legal test.
Okay, there's a, there's a gentleman in, from Atlanta who, as you know, has been very negligent in West Huntsville.
Yes.
Any further discussion, council? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on resolution authorizing the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at nineteen oh eight Pope Drive Northeast Huntsville. Ms. Jordan?
Mr. Culver, thank you. This resolution will authorize the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at nineteen oh eight Pope Drive Northeast. You're, you're seeing pictures of it right now. The property was initially inspected by staff on March twenty-second, 2016, with further review on March the thirty-first by an independent contractor who determined... the thirty-first by an independent contractor who determined that the structure was not economically feasible to repair. It scored an eighty-six out of a hundred, so, you know, a hundred meaning that it was one hundred percent non-reparable. It scored an eighty-six. We don't bring you anything that doesn't score at least a seventy-five, even though the general contractor says a fifty really might constitute a public nuisance. An official notice was sent by certified and first-class mail on the fourteenth of June requesting demolition and removal of the structure by the fourteenth of July. No action was taken by the owners or interested parties, and we're now requesting authorization to abate this nuisance.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anyone from the public wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Mr. Timberlake?
Mr. President, Ralph Timberlake, twenty-one seventeen Atkins Drive.
Thank you.
As much as I like to trust my public servants, I am in agreement with our founding fathers and, and with the actions law, that power tend to corrupt, and absolute power tend to corrupt absolutely. To that end, I respectfully request to see those documentation to which our public servant, to which the mayor has asked us to support. I support righteousness and justice, not a person. To see the evidence to which they have recited, I think that is one of the tenets of our law. I think it's fair to all concerned as a taxpayer. I respectfully and vehemently demand that that information be shown before so that we will know what decision you are acting on, on our behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. And Ms. Jordan, is it something your office does as it relates to, I, I believe Mr. Timberlake is referring to the certified letter? Is that something you customarily do, publish that or anything?
I don't, but I have the file, the paperwork that you, that's a hyperlink tonight that I'd be happy to share with Mr. Timberlake.
Okay, as long as that's public information, you certainly can do that.
He can certainly have a peek at this tonight, and I'd be happy to make him copies.
Okay, thank you. So kind of, I'm not sure if Mr. Timberlake has standing on that, but if it's public information, then we certainly can make it available to him.
Absolutely.
To the extent that it is public information. Thank you. And Ms. Reed?
Good evening. I just would like to know, how long do you give these people, and how do you notify them? And, and my opinion is, in this city, which really, really bothers me and has for a long time, you've got two sets of rules out here, one for the rich and one for the poor folks that can't fix up these houses. When you go buy this property up on North Parkway, and I didn't find out the last two from Kling, he didn't know, you bought two when I wasn't here, why are you not making them tear their property down instead of buying it? I'm not on a roll tonight, but I'm trying to find out how you all get elected, and how does government work? That's all I want to know. Why are you picking on the people when you don't do that for the rich folks? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Ms. Jordan, would you like to address Ms. Reed's concerns? How much time is given and...
Sure. Um, it, it really depends. In this case, it looks like this property owner had about six months or so to respond. They're given a hundred twenty days. They can ask for extensions. You know, it just depends, but we're here about six months after the initial inspection.
Thank you, and I knew that your office would certainly work with anyone who's trying to work with us, so...
Mr. President?
Uh, and we're still open for the public hearing. Mr. Kling, if you'll...
I'll, I'll save my comments for later.
All right, sir. Anyone else from the public wishes to address the council? Ma'am, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Frances Akeridge, two thousand and two Rogers Drive, Huntsville, three five eight one one.
Thank you.
And I happen to know that that property is the property where there was a murder in the front yard, and I know the next-door neighbor personally, and I know that there had been clear evidence of drug sales and drug abuse, so it is not any, I'm, having known this history and frankly being here to represent the neighbor, and also knowing that nobody has any incentive to spend money to tear something down, that all of those things all put together tells me that yes, that property should be destroyed and that the land is, when it's clear title, available for purchase.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the public wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Hearing non, the public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Discussion, Mr. Kling.
Mr. President, just, just a comment. I think we, all of us up here care about neighborhoods, and, and we want to make sure we're going through a fair, due process, and Ms. Jordan said that this, in this circumstance, was about a, a six-month process, but I think like the woman who just spoke, we've got people in these neighborhoods, whether it's this house that may be demolished, or houses that have tall grass that we just took action on, and many of those houses are in quote "low" to moderate-income neighborhoods, and, you know, I'm just thinking, we want to be fair to the property owners, but at the same time, what about the neighbors and the residents of those neighborhoods? Because I think people deserve to have a nice neighborhood to live in, and when we do have something like this, it should be under an active process. It's being worked and going through the legal, legal process, which it looks like you, you have followed, but, you know, let's remember the neighbors out, out in these neighborhoods and the fact that they're entitled to respect, and I think they should get the respect from the council that the quote "big boys" would get, and I think Ms. Jordan is certainly, you know, being fair and going through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Kling, Dr. Robinson.
It would appear that people are living there. Is it occupied?
At the time of the pictures, it was not occupied, so I'm, I'm not sure if there were squatters or, you know...
It looks like somebody was there. But that was one question, but my real question is, on the official notice, it was delivered to two people, a husband and wife, it looks like, and then it's marked that they are deceased. So how do you notify someone who is deceased?
Well, in this case, you know, it might not, it might have gone to the heirs, and that's who I believe it went to.
The assumption is that the, the heirs are getting that mail?
Yes.
So, so it's any estate is, the lien would be against any estate?
That's correct.
The state can't sell the property until it's...
Right. It's just held up until then?
Yeah. And, well, and they had no will. So this is, this happens from time to time where there is no will. It reverts back to a case where it gives the city really even a bigger push to move forward, to take action. If, if heirs should appear, you know, we would certainly deal with them in the future.
And in the meantime, it rids the neighborhood of, of a, a safety issue, and it's unsightly, and it's damaging everybody else's property values.
That's correct.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Ms. Jordan, anyone else? Any further discussion, council? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Six A four is a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at twenty-seven oh two Pendlin Avenue Northwest Huntsville. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, this resolution will authorize the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance at twenty-seven oh two Pendlin Avenue. The property was initially inspected by staff on May the second, with further review by a contractor on May twenty-fifth. That contractor determined that the structure was not economically feasible. It scored a ninety-nine out of a hundred. An official notice was sent by certified and first-class mail. No action was taken by the owners or interested parties, and we're now requesting authorization to abate the nuisance.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anyone from the public wishes to address the council on this particular matter?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Ralph Timberlake, twenty-one seventeen Atkins Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three five eight one zero.
Thank you, sir.
As a citizen and taxpayer of the city of Huntsville, Alabama, I, I'm bemused and puzzled at the guardians of our fresh city who seem to be dealing in their own personal revel in lieu of looking out for what is right and just. As you well know, our founding fathers found this country that the law is supreme to a man. That's why we don't have a king system in this country today. However, it seems like some people want to usurp that and have pseudo-kings and queens in position of authority over us. I find that most reprehensible. I say that because it seems like due process is a byproduct. It's a nuisance. It's not something we should care about. To me, sir, due process is more important. As you well know, we talk about the Second Amendment, where we are supposed to listen to some unpouchable things to us, in the interest that we make sure that we act in a civilized manner and that we give all the same opportunity to be heard and heeded. It seems like only here we get sympathy, not empathy. And I seek that you would recuse yourself from such and return to that which is great and noble, and that is for looking out for the least of God's children. We have entrusted you with some greater thought. All of us have invested our authority within you. And when I look at these kind of things, and they seem to be for years, not just tonight, passed over and dealt with in a very trivial manner. To that end, Mr. President, I humbly beseech you to ensure that all due diligence is done and that due process is the cornerstone and have been adhered to before. As you well know, these people have an opportunity to go before a judicial body to be heard. I know that. So we, I, I don't like to see that you all are making personal comments about these things. I don't think that's fair. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake, and I do want to assure you, sir, as one, one of my former students of the law, that due process has been given in every situation. It would be unconscionable for us to do that without first giving due process. Anyone else wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Hearing non, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kling, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, Dr. Robinson.
So this property goes along with the pattern that I mentioned earlier with regard to the grass cutting, and the property before was someone who was deceased. This property, the owners live in Memphis.
Right.
So we again have absentee landlords who are not caring for their properties and exercising their property rights. They violate, by, by not being responsible, they violate property rights of others, and I, we need to deal with that.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. Six A five is a public hearing on ordinance number sixteen dash four eighty-nine, rezoning property lying on the east side of Wind Drive and on the north side of Old Madison Pike from Research Park District to Research Park Commercial District. This was set July fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at a regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This property is approximately twelve point four six acres. It's the former location of the old Chrysler Electronics site. The portion that is highlighted is the portion of the property that is being requested for rezoning. The property is currently zoned Research Park District, which is the original zoning designation of this area, with the exception of the adjacent residential districts that are west of this property. The petitioner would like to request that this property be rezoned to Research Park Commercial, which will accommodate additional uses outside of the traditional Research Park Office Building type facilities that are currently permitted under the existing zoning designation, and this item was recommended by Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. And Ms. Reed?
Question. Is this part of Cummings Research Park Development and the Madison Square Mall? Is this the beginning of it?
Any additional questions, Ms. Reed?
No, I got the next two coming up. I'll ask you on that.
Okay, Ms. Nichols?
Ms. Reed, this property is not a part of the proposed mid-city development. This property owner petitioned for this rezoning request at the end of April two thousand and six, and this item did appear on the May two thousand and sixteen zoning subcommittee agenda, and this was also prior to the unveiling of the Research Park master plan.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
And council members, may I add, Ms. Nichols?
Mr. Davis?
The proposed rezonance before you does fall in line with the master plan of Cummings Research Park for this note to be a commercial support for Cummings Research Park East, so it does comply with the Parkinson Will plan that was recently unveiled to the public and the Research Park ownership.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Reed, you had another question?
No, not on this one.
Okay, well...
Thank you.
If you would give us an opportunity to finish up this particular public hearing, and then you can address your questions. Anyone else wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Mr. Timberlake?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, your humble servant and citizen of Huntsville, Alabama, in the United States, and taxpayer of Huntsville, of twenty-one seventeen Atkins Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three five one eight zero.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if it's a violation of the privacy of the one that petitioned the Planning Commission for this. I did not hear that particular individual or entity mentioned. I would like to know who petitioned the board, the Planning Commission, and if at all possible, can some of the expansive information be provided pursuant to the reason that the, the city should give due diligence in passing this? It seems like this may be something that has a cost. As you well know, I'm, I'm not a proponent of urban sprawl, and it seems like we are losing a lot of green space. It's a great tax upon our utility system. As you know, some of our sister cities have experienced water quality problems. These kind of unwholesome and unpouchable things need to be dealt with upfront. They should be considered prior to us going into these things, not after. It is high time that we as cities cease from being behind the mule and get in front and lead the mule. To that end, Mr. President, I hope you will consider withdrawing your support or not lending your support to this particular ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. And Ms. Nichols, if it is public information and if you have that information available as it relates to who petitioned, the Planning Commission, for what reason, how come, how long, green space, I know we are always cognizant of that, if you could address that, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. The property is currently owned by Wind Drive Real Estate Investments, Inc. They are the petitioner as well as the owner. They acquired this property beginning in two thousand and fifteen. The overall property is a little bit larger. It's approximately thirty acres. This portion of the property that's only being rezoned is approximately nine plus right-of-way that is included within this rezoning request, as in all of our rezoning and annexation requests. This portion of the property does not include the old Chrysler building itself. This is the old athletic field as well as former parking facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Anyone else wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Hearing non, the public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, council, Dr. Robinson.
So if, if I recall, this is the space that on the Cummings Research Park master plan would be where the, I can't remember what they call it, the maker space would be, the, is that correct?
Yes.
So this would permit that property to go in there, and I think, as I recall, the vision for it, and Shane may be able to, the vision for that was to have it, was like coffee bar kind of stuff would be going in there?
Yes, Dr. Robinson, Shane Davis, Urban Development. The existing Chrysler facility to the north of this piece of property that's up for rezoning would be the Hack, Hacker, Maker Village, excuse me, that was showing the Parkinson Will, and the southern portion of this eight acres was for the, the extended services, hospitality, quick service, food...
Okay, so this would be the food service...
And then the...
Social stuff that would support the maker, hacker space in the, that's going into the building?
Yes, and, and the remaining property to the north that...
There's a connection there somewhere.
That is scheduled to remain Cummings Research Park zoning would be the, for the village.
And, and so the, the existing space is largely just asphalt and with where the old parking spaces were?
Right, and some grass. And this went before the Cummings Research Park Board, and they also recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Hamilton, any further comment on this, sir?
Well, I was going to reinforce particularly Mr. Davis's last statement. I'm on the Cummings Research Park Advisory Board, and, and while, while we have in that board process provided a great deal of scrutiny to the master plan... that process being led by, really by the chamber and with a contractor who has put that plan together, but the board has provided the oversight and provided approval and guidance all the way through the process. This rezoning is in accordance with that plan. Dr. Robinson, you're correct that this part of Research Park, there's a desire to bring greater density, facilitate smaller businesses, startups, those kinds of things. And so providing these kind of commercial activities on this end of the park does that. I would also note, we had a citizen make a comment about, you know, sprawl. And that is something that we have to be concerned about as we look at the way the city grows and making sure that we're smart about it. This is the kind of development in the master plan for CRP is a kind of master plan and development that is the exact opposite of sprawl. It's actually bringing greater density into the urban core. If we were doing this out at the perimeter of the city, then you could have a discussion about sprawl and how you might service that area. But this, in fact, does the opposite of that. And we believe, from the perspective of the board, and I don't intend to speak for them, but in terms of the way the board voted and the support that they provided to this, which was a unanimous vote, we do support this and are believe that it's very much in accordance with the master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Mr. Davis?
If I could add one more thing, council members. Back when you passed the Urban Rule and Redevelopment Plan for Cummings Research Park East, this was Priority Zone Number Two of the four Priority Zones to encourage redevelopment and inspire, you know, new technology, new businesses in and around the park. The Madison Square Mall site was Priority Zone Number One, and this was Priority Zone Number Two because it is the front door that what folks see are Cummings Research Park East along the Interstate Corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? Dr. Robinson? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. 6A7 is a public hearing on ordinance number 16-493, amending Article 27 Village Business C6 District Regulations, Section 27.5 Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements to Add Language Concerning Shared Parking. This was set July 14, 2016, at a regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols.
This proposed zoning ordinance amendment is to delete our existing Article 32 as well as Article 33 of both of these.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, are we on the right item?
We're at Agenda Item Six. I'm sorry. We, I was just looking at that. We're gonna back up, Mr. President, Mr. Russell, to Agenda Item 6A6, which is a public hearing on ordinance number 16-491, deleting Article 32, Plan Development Shopping Center District Regulations, Article 33, Plan Development Highway Commercial District Regulations, and amending Article 70, Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements, subsection 70.1.3, Minimum Parking Space Requirements to Remove Language Concerning Plan Development Commercial Centers. This was set July 14, 2016, at a regular council meeting. I also believe that you may have, well, that'll be the next one. Go ahead, Ms. Nichols.
This proposed zoning ordinance amendment is to delete our existing Article 32 and 33 from the City of Huntsville zoning ordinance. Both of these articles are currently under our planned development sections. Both are commercial districts that were developed in the 80s. And planning staff has never been able to really implement or utilize these districts. So planning staff would like to propose that we delete these two articles as well as we would like to delete the parking regulations, which are located under Article 70 as well. Also, there is existing language in Article 72 for signage, and that information will be deleted with our forthcoming proposed signed ordinance update, which we hope to start later this year or the beginning of 2017.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Anyone from the public wishes to address the counsel on this particular matter? Mr. Timberlake?
Ralph Timberlake, 2117 Akron Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 35810. Mr. President, I know the Planning, I'm hearing that the Planning Commission has done this. I can neither take umbrage nor can I give up my blessing because I don't know the reasoning for why the Planning Committee recommended these things. I think it is only befitting that we at this public hearing be advised as to why the who, why, and when for these changes. Because I would like to think that those that made these laws made them with due diligence, and they had some method in mind that they wanted to accomplish a goal. If a new goal has superseded that goal, I think I'm entitled as a taxpayer and as a citizen to know what it is. To that end, I petition this board to humbly accept my petition and grant the redress to which I am seeking. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. And Ms. Nichols, are you prepared to address Mr. Timberlake's inquiries regarding the purpose of that, who, why, and when, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
And give him an invitation also to the Planning Commission meetings.
Yes, sir. Well, sorry there, Mr. Timberlake. You are more than welcome to attend our Planning Commission meetings. They are held on the fourth Tuesday of every month at 5:00 PM in this same room. Also, our planning agendas are also hyperlinked on the website as well as all of our proposed zoning ordinance amendments are uploaded on the website under the planning page as well. Planning staff has been reviewing our zoning ordinance over the past year, and we've been doing a lot of housekeeping. And this was one of the items on our housekeeping list. It's just unneeded language. We cannot use it. And in the future, we hope to revamp our plan development language from what we currently have today. This language was written in the 80s by a consultant. It wasn't written by planning staff. So it really doesn't fit in with a lot of our current regulations. And planning staff would just like to remove this language from our zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Ms. Reed?
Has this got something to do with Cummings Research Park? Wait, I got a whole lot more stuff to say.
Okay, is that, you just want to start there, Ms. Reed?
I'll start right here. He wants to know who, why, where, and how. We just had an election. The people in this city don't care what y'all do. You don't, you do your deals. It's been going on two years about Research Park. My son said, "Do your homework before you start a fire." Well, I did. Right here is Mid-City owners and the mayor and the good old chosen boys and the money makers of this city own Mid-City. They're tearing up Research Park 'cause you figure it out. You tell me what they're doing. Why are they changing all this? They didn't spend two years trying to put GE out there, Polaris out there. They've been trying to buy and move Pennies and Sears. So all of this is changing the zoning and the ordinance. It's an industrial development. Sooner or later, I do go to the Planning Department meetings. And this is a yes thing. The Planning Department will not go against the grain of what they're asked and told to do. That's a fact. This city is owned for any of you like it or don't like it. I've been coming 30 years. I've never seen this city and this administration carry on as they have the last four years. If this is not part of Research Park, yes or no?
Okay, so Ms. Nichols, could you address Ms. Reed's question, please?
Yes, Ms. Reed, this is not pertaining to Research Park. We have no planned developments
You don't?
of either of these sorts in the city. And there is no use for this, for to retain either of these articles. So the who is planning staff is who is proposing this deletion. It's not needed at this time and won't, more than likely, will not be used in the future. But we do expect there will be a rewrite of our planned development language in the future.
But it does butt up next to it, and it's part of it, right?
No. Council members, can I help Ms. Nichols?
Hold on for just a minute, please.
Well, I got the goods, don't, it don't matter. It's coming, whether you like it or don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you have questions to the general public, please address them to the counsel, and we'll get the appropriate people to respond to that. Having said that, Mr. Davis, if you'd like to address those concerns?
Thank you, Council President. Our planning staff does a phenomenal job. And comments like that, it's not for Ms. Nichols to address. I don't think publicly, as Director of Urban Development, I'd like to address those.
Yes, sir.
We've been dealing with the big picture process now for a couple of years. We are, have been, and will continue to bring you zoning regulations within our zoning, which is extremely outdated in some sections where our planning staff is going through those, identifying ones that has never, ever been used in the city, and start to replace those with something that is more current and more progressive that you see other cities using. That is exactly what our planning staff has brought before you tonight. Has nothing to do with the redevelopment of Madison Square Mall. Has nothing to do with Cummings Research Park. And I just want to go on record for that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for the clarification, although I know Ms. Nichols is holding her own. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishes to address the counsel on this particular matter?
And Mr. President, could I put in?
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, if we would go ahead and close the public hearing, then we'll take comments. Anyone else wishes to address the counsel? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Further discussion, Mayor Battle?
Mr. President, I think I heard Ms. Reed say that I had some ownership in Mid-City City Center or one of those projects. I do not. There is no ownership at all, and I would like to make that for the record. And wherever you're getting that from, you're wrong, Ms. Reed. You can bring any papers you want to. I can show you there is nothing there that I have any ownership in any of that. And I would hope that you would refrain from telling things that aren't true. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Ready for the question? Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Thank you, Mr. Davis. We're now at Agenda Item 6B. These are public hearings to be set. Six, I'm sorry, 67, which is Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 16-493. 6A7. 6A7. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on Ordinance Number 16-493, amending Article 27 Village Business C6 District Regulations, Section 27.5 Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements to Add Language Concerning Shared Parking. This was set July 14, 2016, at a regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols.
This proposed zoning ordinance amendment is to amend our current parking regulations for the Village Business C6 District. This district was newly created in 2015. And the current parking regulations reference Article 70, which is our existing off-street parking regulations. Planning staff has created some language, not only to encourage shared parking, but to also reduce the required parking. I have given each member of council a copy of this, so hopefully you all can follow along. The proposed language reads as follows. For all single-tenant, individual, retail, trade, and multi-tenant retail trades, mixed-use, and multifamily developments, shared parking is strongly encouraged. Off-street parking and loading requirements shall be set, shall be provided and set forth on the following chart. On this chart that has been created, planning staff has created two options. One, we have created a required parking scenario based on use. And those uses include residential, lodging, office, retail and restaurant, civic, and other. For the retail lodging office and, excuse me, for the residential lodging office and retail restaurant components, we have parking ratios either based on the dwelling or based on the square footage per 1,000 square feet of each building. For our civic and other parking requirements, we would still like to reference Article 70. For our shared parking, we have created a shared parking matrix, which is also based on function or use. And basically, you would follow the shared parking scenario. So if you had a component that was a mixture of residential and lodging, you would use the matrix of 1.1 times your number of dwellings to get your minimum parking. If you had a ratio of three different uses, so if you had residential lodging and office, you would choose the largest ratio, which would be 1.4. And you would multiply that number, and that's how you would derive your parking. Planning staff's attempt is to encourage more shared parking within our Village Business C6 District, as well as we would like to reduce the amount of unused and unnecessary parking. In some areas where we have other zoning districts, there is a mixture of parking based on the uses in those particular districts. And we're hoping to alleviate some of those issues with this new zoning designation. And also, we have created some scenarios. I created one here. This one is for office, retail, and restaurant. Basically, we just used some sample numbers that we received from working with local real estate entities in town, just getting a generic idea of some retail space. We used our current language based on the number of spaces, whether that's per square foot or half of the capacity. And with that, we came up with a total of 226 required parking spaces. That's based on Article 70's today's numbers. In scenario two, we used the information located on our required parking chart that we have derived for C6. And we came up with a lower number of parking, 174 spaces. And we also created a scenario for shared parking, which reduced the parking even more to 145 spaces. So it's a difference between the current existing parking and the shared parking. There's a difference of 81 spaces. So as you can see, there is a significant difference as you change your parking numbers. And this also would include any available on-street parking as well as any neighboring public parking that can be factored in to the overall parking ratios as well.
And thank you, Ms. Nichols. Anyone from the public? Ms. Reed?
I'm sorry to be so questionable, but I do like to know what's going on in the city. I was at the Planning Department, if I'm not mistaken, over this right here. I questioned why you're taking spaces down from 174 to 145. Would that have anything to do with Stone Middle, Campus 805 up there? When I wondered where these people's gonna park with all this restaurant and all this other stuff going down through there? Do they really have enough parking spaces? That was the question I asked at the Planning Department. Did that have anything to do with this? I'm sure you're gonna say no, that's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. So, Ms. Nichols, why did we take the spaces down from 174 to 145? Does it have anything to do with Stone Middle and the restaurants in there?
Ms. Reed, this does not have anything to do with Stone Middle School. That property is zoned light industry. This is only for the Village Business C6 District, which we currently have no districts that are zoned, this particular district. But we do have extreme interest in local as well as out-of-town parties that are interested in utilizing this district, hopefully in the future. The parking for light industry strictly would still abide by Article 70, so this would not apply to those particular uses that are located at Campus 805 or the former Stone Middle School. Also, the scenario was basically to demonstrate the difference between our current parking, our proposed required parking, as well as our proposed shared parking.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Mr. Timberlake?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ralph Timberlake, 2117 Akron Drive, Huntsville, Alabama.
Thank you, sir.
I noticed that we was talking about mixed parking. However, as a combat wounded, disabled veteran, I'm concerned that the ADA Act was not poignant in this particular presentation. I would like to know how many handicapped spots are gonna be allocated in this for those of us who have mobility and ambulatory problems or challenges? And I also, at this time, would like to know, when will our parking enforcers and our law enforcement office cease from absconding from enforcing the ADA Act and in finding these individuals who failed to put up handicap placards, who failed to have enough handicapped spots as prescribed by law? And also, what would they do about these individuals who are parking in these handicapped spots illegally? As I know today, I was subjected to such a... As I know today, I was subjected to such a horrible undertaking. So I, while we are talking about all of these parking spots, let us not forget our handicapped, those who are least able to speak for themselves. To that end, Mr. President, I hope you will solicit that information from Ms. Nichols and tell me exactly how many of those that we can expect in that.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake, and those are very good questions, sir. So, Ms. Nichols, um, how many handicap spaces would be there? Would it impact them? And then we're gonna get Mr. Brown, if you will, sir, to prepare to come up to address the parking enforcement, whether or not we have absconded from enforcing parking, and what do we do about individuals who park in their spots? I know we have a judge here in the chamber tonight. Judge Cleveland, if you would like to prepare to address what you all do in municipal court as it relates to individuals parking in handicap parking places. So we'll start with you with Ms. Nichols, and then we'll go to Mr. Brown and then Judge Cleveland.
Yes, any new developments within the Village Business C6, just as our other developments would be required to be ADA compliant? The number of spaces would be dependent on the number of spaces that they need, but I'm, I'm certain that all developments would provide handicap access to their development. As far as the parking enforcement that is not handled by the planning department or zoning that's done under, uh, there's a parking enforcement force that handles that, and Mr. Brown can elaborate a little more.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. And, Mr. Brown, have you all absconded from enforcing handicap or writing tickets for handicap parking violations?
No, sir, we have not. We have a dedicated team of enforcement officers that write numerous tickets daily. Huntsville Police Department as well writes tickets every day in handicap spaces, and we're committed to maintaining access to those spaces for those who need them. And the judge and the courts have supported us 100% in that effort.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And Judge Cleveland, if you would introduce yourself to this body, please.
Uh, yes, Judge Cybill Cleveland, City of Huntsville Municipal Court. And, Mr. President, those matters involved, involving parking tickets are handled through our magistrate's office. Our chief magistrate, Pam Cantrell, would have the process and the procedure for that. I would be more than happy to get back with this body on that once I speak with her.
Thank you, Judge Cleveland. And just for the record, you all know that I'm the former chief magistrate there with the court, but I'm gonna let the court handle that. So it's a rhetorical question for me, but thank you all so kindly. Anyone else from the council wishes to, anyone else from the public wishes to address the council on this particular matter? Okay? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Clean, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. We're now at Agenda Item 6B, Public Hearing to be set. Council members, we have one resolution to declare a public nuisance located at 113 Cotton Bend Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, to set the date for when objections will be heard, September the 8th, 2016, at a regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. And council members, we'll take this up at our next regular council meeting if you don't have any questions or discussion at this time. Mr. Russell?
Uh, we're not gonna vote on it?
Yes, we're gonna vote on it.
Okay.
I just thought you had a question, I'm sorry. Okay? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. We're now at Agenda Item Number Seven, Communications from the Public. As I call your name, please go to the microphone, state your name and address. You'll have approximately three minutes to address the council. Ms. Gwen Tru Moore Ragland, I believe she may have left. Ms. Ragland?
Mr. President, she was here.
Yes, sir.
But stepped out.
Yes, sir. If she comes back in, we'll, we'll let her make her comments. We'll move on now to Mr. Ralph Timberlake.
Mr. President, Ralph Timberlake, 2117, Akron Drive, and I wanna, I rise to speak about transparency and participatory democracy. While this august body participates actively in adhering to that process, there are certain entities with this body is, has a nexus with, who in fact are the owners of, they seem to flee from emulating such a wonderful pattern in which this body has established and seemed to want to establish perpetually. In perpetuity, to have this body so dedicated, so steep in transparency and participatory democracy, it's a shame and a disgrace that you have some, like the Huntsville Hospital, who refuses to have its subcommittee meetings open to the public. I'm well aware that the Huntsville Hospital is not micromanaged by the city council, nor our mayor. However, those who sit on that board is like us who was on Tuesday, elected officials or, or in the process of electing officials to represent us. So these individuals who have offered themselves up, and you have so, in your wisdom, found reasons to give them and entrust them with such authority to represent this city, would not emulate you. It's like a man looking in the mirror, and he sees another man's face. To that end, Mr. President, and this body, I ask you, when you select and when you appoint that you encourage and that you exalt those members to emulate the things that we have found wholesome, pleasant, and beneficial to this city, to do anything less is a travesty of justice and a mockery to the great people who have went before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. Ms. Jackie Reed? Ms. Reed, if you'll state your address for the record, please.
Sorta, like City Hall. Have changed my notes three times.
You have three minutes.
Thank you for laying the public input.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
I wanna correct something tonight. I'm not always right, but I'm not always wrong. There was something that was said at the last meeting and tonight about that Cummings Research Park and that deed, I believe the mayor said 2003 when they bought that property. This deed right here, right out of the tax assessor's office, says February 2013. So I'm not always right, but I'm not always wrong. But I just wanted to straighten that out and make me not look too bad. Anyway, I wanna thank, I wanna thank the people who voted in the last election. I also want to thank the Channel 1931, sometimes 48, that covered it. The Huntsville Times was not covering the election. I think I cast a question, did the city own them or somebody happen? I called many times to get them to, to put it in the paper. I was told to call Birmingham. They weren't interested. They said the city election was not important. So, I'm not through with that. I'm calling Newhouse in New York. I don't get through with nothing too easy. But anyway, I think it was terribly, terribly wrong. And I can't congratulate you tonight, Mayor Spencer. I mean, yeah, Spencer, she's trying to help me in this election, but Mayor Battle, three times, you're elected, I can't congratulate you. Spencer was in the background when I talked tonight. I can't congratulate you and our Mr. Cover you, but I, and if you all worked for me, I'd fire you. I'm sorry, I would. But Mr. Cover, I might pull you back and keep you because you do make the public get their answers out here. So I'd have to think about you. You know, I don't think you've really worked for the good of the public and the people in the last four years. The first four was great, but the last four is sad. The city is not good. Empty buildings, traffic, Cummings Research Park empty. You're still trying to make your deals in the, in the background, and you know, hate to be so ugly, but a $750,000 house that the Supreme Court said it was in the wrong place. Who's running the city and who's keeping up what's going on? That wouldn't be going on if I was the mayor, you can bet on it. They gave him a hardship case. A hardship case? And then a historical district wouldn't let Dr. Sutra try no tear a house down, and guess what? The man that's rebuilding it today has tore the whole back of the house down. So I can't, I can't figure out what's going on in the city. Do you need some help to run the city? Shane Davis may need some help over there, too. I appreciate it. I'll be back at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Council members, we're now at Agenda Item Number Eight. There aren't any Huntsville utility items. We're now at Agenda Item Number Nine, Board Appointments. 9A1 is board appointments to be voted on. Resolution to reappoint Wallace Kirkpatrick to the Huntsville Madison County Marina and Port Authority for a term to expire July 1st, 2021, nominated August 11th, 2016, brought by Dr. Robinson. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. 9A2 is a resolution to appoint Sarah Gessler to the Museum Board of the City of Huntsville, Seat 8, for a term to expire August 13, 2022, nominated August 11, 2016, by Dr. Robinson and the chair.
Move to approve.
Second by the chair. Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by the chair. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. 9A3 is a resolution to reappoint Virginia Rice to the Museum Board of the City of Huntsville, Seat 9, for a term to expire August the 13th, 2022, nominated August 11, 2016, brought by Dr. Showers.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Clean. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. 9A4 is a resolution to appoint Shirley Corbett to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October the 1st, 2018, nominated August 11th, 2016, at a regular council meeting, brought by Dr. Robinson.
Move to approve.
Second by, motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. 9B, Board Appointment Nominations. Council members, we'll take these up at our next regular council meeting. 9B1 is nomination of James Tony Smith for reappointment to the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeal for a term to expire August 22nd, 2021, brought by Dr. Showers. 9B2 is the nomination of Eddie J. Turner for reappointment to the Von Braun Center Board of Control for a term to expire August 27th, 2020, brought by Dr. Showers. 9B3 is the nomination of John Powell for reappointment to the Board of Examinations and Appeals for Construction Industries for a term to expire September the 21st, 2018, brought by Dr. Showers. Council members, are there any additional appointment nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate W. Evans Quinn Levin for reappointment to the Von Braun Center Board of Control for a new four-year term.
Thank you, Mr. Russell, for nomination of W. Quinn Levin Evans. And any additional appointments? Nominations, brother? We'll take these up, council members, at our next regular scheduled council meeting. We're now at Agenda Item Number 10, Approval of Expenditures. 10A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Dr. Showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the approval of expenditures in the amount of $9,189,044.32.
Second.
Motion has been made by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Clean, expenditures in the amount Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Now at Agenda Item Number 11, Communications from the Mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I'd like to announce the reappointment of Tommy Brown to the HIMSE Board for the six-year term to expire 8/23/2022. Thank you for your service, Mr. Brown. And it has been a lot of years that you've been there. Thank you for that service. The only other announcement I have is the mayor's 100-mile walking challenge started yesterday. This morning, I got up, did my 2.5 miles, so I'm on, on task right now, and I'd like to invite all the council members to join in the 100-mile walking challenge, 100 miles in 100 days. It's something to get us ready for the holidays, and we can take off for the holidays and get back to healthy Huntsville right after that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Battle. We're now at Agenda Item Number 12, Communications from the Council. Dr. Showers, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to announce that on yesterday, the mayor and I attended a press conference of a historical site, the William Hooper Council High School. Yesterday, announced, the city's moved to bring back that historical school. In part, the environmental concerns have all been completed, and the work will now start on that project. The president of the council alumni gave remarks. Several alumnus of the high school was there at the council high press conference. Want to also thank the 50-year gala that was attended by the council high school alumnus that the gala was a success, well-attended, and certainly moves forward. The school's commitment to assist the city, the housing authority, others, in bringing back this historical school. I want to thank this mayor, this, this administration, that we have moved from just talking, putting in place the opportunity for council high school to be brought back to a position that we can all be a cry, be proud of. My second point, I want to announce now that we do have the agreement from Dr. Joseph Lowry to do the dedication. That date is September the 14th, and I'll be getting more information through Michelle Jordan on how we're going to make this dedication happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Mr. Russell?
I just want to remind everybody that school's in session and that football season has started, so please support their local team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Dr. Robinson?
We had the opportunity this week to attend a special announcement the Redstone Federal Credit Union made. They are going to be making a $2.5 million gift to our libraries, and they, there was a sign there that said something to the effect of every great city has a great library, and this is their 65th anniversary. They were looking for a way to celebrate, and they celebrated by making a $2.5 million gift, and that gift will be split between the capital projects for the North Huntsville Library, the South Huntsville Library, and the Madison Library. I, I not only applaud their generosity, but I think they have created a great funding model that other corporations might want to take a look at. It's a way to support the entire city, and I, and I think that's a great thing. We are kicking off our South Huntsville Capital Camp, our re-engagement for the South Huntsville Capital Campaign. Now that we actually are approaching the time when, next year, when Grissom will move to its new site, that, that the old Grissom site on Bailey Cove is going to be vacant, we're going to be able to turn dirt, and so raising the money for, for that, that library is going to be very, is going to become very urgent. We are well over halfway, three-quarters of the way to that $8.5 million. We really just have to cross the finish line, and we have a great team in place to do that, and anyone who is interested in joining us to work on getting across the finish line on that funding project, I would love to hear from you. I also want to recognize and thank Harrison Diamond, who is chairing the Connect Program this year for Leadership Huntsville. Harrison is incredibly busy. He's going to school, he's working for overtime for the city. He's working for overtime for the city. And he's, and he was very gracious to take on the responsibility of chairing the, the Young Professionals Program for Leadership Huntsville. And they've had their opening now and have done a wonderful job. So thank you for that, Harrison. Dennis Madsen also is working as a program, a day chair for the Leadership Program and chaired the Leadership Thirty, Class Thirty Opening Session, or Living Like a Local Session yesterday. Created an absolutely innovative, mind-boggling, incredible day. I don't know how it will ever be repeated. And I don't know what they're going to do for the next one, but thank you for that, Dennis. We have really great professionals working in our city who are willing to give their time for the community above and beyond what they do on a daily basis. And I'm grateful for them. I'm going to be having a town hall meeting on August twenty-ninth at six-thirty at the Bailey Cove Library. The focus of that event is going to be to talk about updates on South Parkway Construction. And joining us for that will be Kathy Martin, bless her heart, who is always so willing to, to do these briefings. Also Seth Burkett from Aldot will be there. And we'll look forward to answering questions from the public and also giving them good news about how quickly we're progressing with that project. And then the following day, on August thirtieth at six o'clock at Alders Gate Methodist Church, we are going to see the installation of the Big Picture Exhibit. And it's going to be there for, for a couple of days. So we will look forward to having everybody in South Huntsville join us there. And then finally, I just want to congratulate the mayor on an eighty percent-plus win from the community. I think that's remarkable and, and certainly reflects the, the very visionary leader that he is and the great job he's doing for the community.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Councilman Clean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody that came out to my town meeting Monday of last week and for the department heads that have followed up on the emails that came out as a result of concerns expressed by constituents. Similar to what Dr. Robinson said, we appreciate so much the responsiveness, professionalism of the department heads and of the staff that, that work with the council to take care of citizen problems. Also, some good news. The announcement was made this week about the Academy Sports and Outdoors going into the old Walmart property at Drake and the Parkway. And I know Shane Davis and Mayor Battle had worked on that for, I believe it's about four, four years or so with all the property owners. And that is such a great shot in the arm for, for that section of the city. It's, not only is it good for West Huntsville, but it's good for the Parkway corridor. And I think there are going to be some more things that you guys are going to be talking about in, in the near future. And again, congratulations on a job well done. I think we're happy to see the old building being bulldozed down. New construction and some great landscaping, I understand, is also going to be part. And that's going to be a great shot in the arm for, for that area. And again, I think it shows there's a lot of great things that are taking place in the inner central areas of the city. And we're not sprawling outward, we're taking care of what we have inward. One issue I wanted to ask, and this is sort of cross-jurisdictional between the Police Department and Transportation. The area of Galton Street near Huntsville High School has been an area that I've received some calls and complaints about. Residents are complaining about students parking on, off-street. And they can do that, of course, but when they start blocking driveways and when they start littering and they're, they're seen littering and on their way to school, then that's something that we have to be kind of concerned about. So I, I think I've already had some communication, but just want to ask if the Transportation Department, as well as the Police Department, would kind of monitor that area. Basically, it's the area around Marsh Chutes, a little bit to the north, a little bit to the south on, on Galton Street. With the, with the new time, you know, new, new school year's starting, that's kind of the time that we need to get attention to it. And, Mr. President, that is all I have. Want to, again, congratulate the winners and those in the runoffs. And it's nice, I think, Mr. Russell, Dr. Robinson would join me in saying it sure is nice on the sideline watching all this.
Thank you, Councilman Clean. Thank you, Mayor Battle.
And I'd like to respond, Ms. Robinson, thank you for the congratulations. The congratulations don't go to me. They go to those people sitting out there, standing along the wall there who are department heads who have worked so hard over the last four years. And their work is reflected in the vote that came out and also reflected in the council and the council's work that's been done. This was kind of a vote on the whole city. And no matter what we've heard tonight, it's also a vote on how, how satisfied people are with how the city is being run. So I want to thank each of the administrators out there who have made, made this last four years be the success that it has been and to the council, too. Everybody's had a part in being a part of Huntsville's success. And thank you for the work that y'all have done.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. And I would be remiss, Dr. Showers, if I could borrow that word of yours for just a moment and just digress back to Municipal Court. Municipal Court, and seemingly there's a misnomer about what Municipal Court does. You heard Judge Cleveland when she said she has a chief magistrate who handles the parking enforcement. And Ms. Cantrell does a great job with that in the magistrate's division. The Municipal Court also has a judge who handles traffic tickets. That is the nighttime judge, Judge Scott Rogers. As it relates to what they do, the judges, they handle all of those matters that impact the lives of thousands of individuals on a daily basis, such as, but not necessarily limited to, mental health court with issues that impact people from all walks of life, domestic violence and violence issues that impact people without regards to their socioeconomic status and all of those other things that, that we regard as some people thinking it can't happen to them, and it does. There is just a variety of things. In fact, if you want to know what the Municipal Court does, you can go through the Criminal Code of Alabama Title thirteen A, which the city ordinance adopts all of those applicable misdemeanors. Everything from theft to DUI cases, to assault cases, to vandalism, to disorderly conduct, to just a variety of things. So I thought I'd take advantage of this opportunity to just kind of enlighten the public more in-depth as it relates to those matters that impact all of us. And Judge Cleveland, thank you. And Judge Rodenhauser and Judge Rogers and all of you all staff for what you do. When we don't hear from you, all that means you're doing a great job. So thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Dr. Showers?
Many citizens have asked about what was going on at the Maston Lake and Jordan Lane intersection. Tonight, I can tell you that that is going to be a distribution center. More announcements will be coming after tonight. But for those who have called several times about what's going on, site work is being done. But it's going to be a distribution center at that location. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. We're now at Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Unfinished Business Items for Action.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I apologize. If, if I could, there's one, one other announcement I wanted to make.
Yes, sir.
And I think we just need to get out for the public. Mr. Binion, I think, has already handled it. But next Tuesday, August the thirtieth, here at the council chambers at twelve noon, is going to be the official canvas of the election results. And certainly that is a meeting that's open to the public, but that's where the official counting takes place. And it's ninety-nine point nine-nine percent the same of what, what's already been reported. But that is a public meeting and the public certainly is welcome to come.
And that is correct, Councilman Clean. I got up on a little tangy there, but that is correct. And Ms. McWilliams, our assistant, has sent that communications to all of us. So again, on Tuesday, August the thirtieth at twelve noon, is the canvassing of the vote by the council. Thank you, Mr. Clean. Now at Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Unfinished Business Items for Action. Thirteen A is ordinance number sixteen dash five seventy-seven, annexing zero point forty-three acres of land lying on the north side of Terry Drake Road and east of Old Big Cove Road. Introduced August the eleventh, 2016 at a regular council meeting. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. Ms. Nichols?
This property is approximately point four-three acres. It's located on the north side of Terry Drake Road and east of Old Big Cove Road. It's currently a single-family detached dwelling. And the property owner has petition for annexation in order to utilize city services as well as city schools for their children.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell. Second by Dr. Robinson. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Thirteen B is ordinance number sixteen dash five seventy-eight, annexing one point forty-nine acres of land lying on the west side of Old Big Cove Road, west of Hampton Ridge Road. Introduced August the eleventh, 2016 at a regular council meeting. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. Ms. Nichols?
This property is approximately one point four-nine acres of vacant property. It's on the west side of Old Big Cove Road and west of Hampton Ridge Drive. It's directly across from the Hampton Ridge subdivision. The property owner is petitioning for annexation in order to receive city services.
Further discussion, council? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen, I'm sorry. Thirteen C is an ordinance number sixteen dash five seventy-nine, annexing zero point sixty-three acres of land lying on the north side of Terry Drake Road and east of Old Big Cove Road. Introduced August eleventh, 2016 at a regular council meeting.
Move to approve?
Motion by Dr. Showers. Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. Ms. Nichols?
This property is point six-three acres. It's located on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and south of Terry Drake Road. This property is currently a single-family detached dwelling. And the property owner has petition for annexation in order to utilize city services as well as city schools.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Thirteen D is the ordinance number sixteen dash five eighty, Substitute A, Amending Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville, Alabama Article One, Section fifteen dash two, Administration of Chapter Generally. This was introduced August the eleventh, 2016 at a regular council meeting. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers.
Mr. Chairman, can we have an explanation of what Substitute A is and what was, what changes?
Yes. Mr. Hamilton, if you would like to address that, please.
President, you'd, you'd asked before that I'd take a look at this and then explain. There was two places in the original, the ordinance that was introduced where actually there were two words missing. If you look at Section fifteen dash two, Subparagraph A nine and A ten in the original, both of those paragraphs started with "to enter into", and it needs to say "to enter into and execute". The, the words that were missing were "and execute" in both of those places. And without the authority to actually execute your intent, the, the ordinance wouldn't carry the weight that it needs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I do have a question.
Yes, Dr. Robinson.
Fifteen, uh...
Dash two.
Fifteen I, or today, we have a, no, it's not I, it's H, something about a taxpayer installment agreement. Does that have anything to do with this?
It, it does. And, and Ms. Sergeant will, will explain greater detail. But essentially, if you approve the ordinance that, that's before you right now,
It makes possible this.
Then that piece essentially sets in place some of the forms related to the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Thirteen E is a resolution number sixteen dash five eighty-one, authorizing the mayor to enter to a standard fixed-price agreement between the City of Huntsville and Jake Marshall Services, Inc., to provide for a comprehensive energy-saving plan for LED lighting at twenty-seven thirty-nine Johnson Road and one hundred eighth Church Street. This was introduced August eleventh, 2016 at a regular council meeting.
Move to approve?
Motion by Dr. Showers. Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion?
Mr. President, could we get an explanation on this item?
Yes, we can. Mr.?
Yes, sir. This is a energy, energy reduction project to install LED lights at Parking Deck M. This is the one that's across the street from VBC. This is also includes the original fleet facility on Johnson Road. This, the contract amount is two-hundred and seventy-three thousand, five thirty-nine. This will have a, a payback of approximately three-and-a-half years. And once complete, we will be eligible for a rebate from TVA of about fifty thousand dollars. So the total in the end will be about two-hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Easter. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Thank you, Dr. Showers. Thank you, Mr. Easter. Now at Agenda Item Thirteen F, Resolution Number sixteen dash three sixty, authorizing the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at one oh one Whitney Avenue, Northeast Huntsville, Alabama. This was postponed July fourteenth, 2016 at a regular council meeting.
Move to approve?
Motion by Dr. Robinson. Second by Mr. Clean. Discussion. Ms. Jordan?
You've seen this property before.
Yes.
As of today, there are no active building permits that have been pulled for the repair or restoration of the property. So it's before you again today for your consideration to, to approve its demolition.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. If I remember correctly, this was on the agenda originally, May twenty-sixth. It was postponed to July fourteenth and subsequently postponed to tonight, August twenty-fifth. Any further discussion, council? Ready for the?
Yes. Ms. Jordan, was it a determination that this piece of property was not fit to be done with anything other than to demolish? Were there any contractors who looked at it to determine whether or not it was feasible to repair?
Yes. Dr. Showers, our independent contractor did look at the property. Let me get to his evaluation. It scored an eighty-five out of one hundred. It scored a seventeen for the exterior portions of the building, the foundation floor system, framing, a roof system. It could have scored up to a forty. It's scored a seventeen of those items, the percentage needing to be repaired. The interior scored a twenty-eight out of thirty for interior repairs needed, including the interior floors, walls, and ceilings. It scored a thirty out of thirty for the utility systems that needed to be repaired. That's the electrical, heating, and plumbing. All of the windows and doors needed to be replaced on the property, which gave it an overall score of eighty-five of, out of one hundred. And the independent contractor's comment was dwelling appears to have been vacant for extended period of time and repairs have been neglected. He did determine that rehab was not feasible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in? Yes, sir. Dr. Showers?
Is this the time that if there's someone here that may want to address this owner and persons who may have an interest in this?
We can certainly do that, Dr. Showers. I do want to say that, and I don't know if Mr. Russell met with the gentleman that potentially was going to purchase the property. And I did have a meeting with him. And his hands are tied and he has since given up on any effort to do that. Is there anyone who wants to address the council on that particular issue? Hearing none? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. And I want to assure the public that we did everything that we could to try to save this in as much as we could do. And thank you all, Ms. Jordan, your division, for your patience in working with the potential owner and this body.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, now, agenda item number fourteen, new business items for introduction. Fourteen A is introduction of an ordinance, annexing forty-five point forty-one acres of land lying on the west side of Old Bick Cove Road and on the north side of Notty Walls Road. This is brought by planning. Fourteen B is introduction of an ordinance, amending ordinance number fourteen dash eighty-eight, fee schedule for Animal Service Center brought by Animal Services. Council members will take these up at our next regular scheduled council meeting. Now, agenda item number fifteen, new business items for consideration or action. Council members?
Mr. President, I would ask the following items to be held.
Yes, sir.
Fifteen H, fifteen I, fifteen K, fifteen S, and fifteen W.
So, council members, thus far we have items to be held, fifteen H, fifteen I, fifteen K, fifteen S, fifteen W. Are there any additional items that you wish to hold?
Mr. Chairman, I wish to hold fifteen E.
Fifteen E, as an echo. Any additional items, council members? So, what we have thus far is fifteen E, fifteen H, fifteen I, fifteen K, fifteen S, and fifteen Fifteen A is request for authorization to advertise and field five landscape maintenance worker positions brought by Landscape Management. Fifteen B is a request for authorization to advertise and field one regular full-time position of animal shelter coordinator at a grade twelve brought by Animal Services. Fifteen C is a request for authorization to advertise and field one full-time programmer analyst position at a higher rate than minimum if necessary brought by ITS. Fifteen D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement with the low bidders meeting specification as outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance brought by finance. Fifteen F is a resolution authorizing travel expenses brought by finance. Fifteen G is an ordinance, amended budget ordinance number fifteen dash six forty-two, by changing the appropriated funding in various departments and funds brought by finance. Fifteen J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement, enter into a settlement agreement and full general release by and among the city of Huntsville, Richard E. and Betty R. Chestnut, Denton, uh, Diamond Realty LLC, and Guild Building and Remodeling LLC brought by the city attorney. Fifteen L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Gonzalez and Strength and Associates, Inc., for engineering design services for additional lanes on US Highway seventy-two west, seventy-two from west of County Line Road to Crusher Road and whitening on County Line Road and Railroad Bed Road, project number seventy-one dash sixteen, Tango Lima zero one zero six brought by Engineering. Fifteen M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and the low bidder, Reader Contracting Services, Inc., for Benroya Lane Extension, project number seventy-one dash sixteen, Romeo Delta zero five brought by Engineering. Fifteen N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Miller and Miller, Inc., for EUL weep hole repairs, Lake F project number seventy-one dash sixteen, Sarah Papa fifty-one brought by Engineering. Fifteen O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number two to the agreement between the city of Huntsville and McCord Construction for periodic bid for sanitary sewer bore items, twenty-fourteen, project number sixty-five dash fourteen, Sarah Papa sixteen brought by Engineering. Fifteen P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Smith Engineering Company, Inc., for engineering design services for sanitary sewer extension, project number seventy-one dash sixteen, Sierra Sierra zero four brought by Engineering. Fifteen Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Garber LLC for engineering design services for Flint River Drainage Basin Sanitary Sewer Master Plan, project number seventy-one dash sixteen, Sierra Sierra zero five brought by Engineering. Fifteen R is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Snyder Historic Preservation LLC for historic resource survey for the McThorn, Mike Thornmore Acres Neighborhood brought by inspections. Fifteen T is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a subaward to, for a twenty-sixteen EMP grant brought by Emergency Management. Fifteen U is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Crow Engineering LLC for engineering services for the San Volleyball Complex at John Hunt Park located on Airport Road brought by General Services. Fifteen V is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a Nissan EV Charger donation agreement between the city of Huntsville and Nissan North America, Inc., brought by Public Transit.
Mr. Chairman, I move for consolidation approval of fifteen A through fifteen D, fifteen F through fifteen G, fifteen J, fifteen L through R, and fifteen T through V.
Second.
Okay. And council, if we could...
A point of order, please.
If we could hold off for just a minute, I think Mr. Riley has a comment.
I'm informed that, that K, which has been held for procedural reasons, needs to be passed before consideration of N. N has not been held, so if N is grouped in with this...
Mr. President, I move that N be held.
Second.
So, motion has been made and properly second for the holding of N. Is there any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. We'll hold N and add N in that inclusion with the others to be held. So, we'll go back. Mr. Russell, do you want to...
No, no, we're good.
Okay, so, motion has been made and properly second for A through D, F through G, J, L through M, O through R, and T through V. Is there a second?
Second.
By Dr. Showers. Discussion, ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, they carry. We're now at agenda item fifteen E as an echo, resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations.
Move to approve?
Motion by Dr. Showers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clean. Discussion?
Ms. Culver, I'll have questions, please.
Mr. Russell.
Ms. Sergeant, you may not be the best person to answer this question. I may need Mr. Davis to come down, but I want to talk about the agreement with the Clinton Street parking garage.
Mr. President, I can, I can address that.
Okay.
So, members of council, included as one of the donations in, in the items before you is seventy thousand and change, it's, it's not exactly seventy thousand. And that is the developer's contribution towards the facade improvements on the Clinton Street Garage. You may recall that in the development agreement for the retail development that's ongoing there on the first floor of that garage, the city agreed to partner with them in doing some facade improvements to, to the parking garage. We capped the city contribution towards that at two hundred thousand dollars. The total project is, it came in at two hundred and seventy and I think three or four hundred dollars. I don't have the exact amount in front of me, but, so that seventy thousand dollar donation that you see is the developer's contribution. So, the city, as per the development agreement, there, our contribution does not exceed the two hundred thousand dollars, and so this donation allows the completion of that project.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. That's just what I wanted to explain. And can you also explain the, the donation of, for Barrett Museum?
I can, and, and Mr. Easter's will also, if we need more details on it. The, we're partnering with Barrett Museum for the construction of the Rosenwald School and you may have seen some of the, the press on groundbreaking there, but that is one where the city put some amount of money into the capital plan, which you approved prior to last, this last fiscal year, and the Barrett Museum was responsible for private fundraising for the rest of the funds. And so, the donation you see there is their contribution towards those construction dollars for the Rosenwald School.
Thank you, and I commend them for doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And ready, any further discussion on that matter? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. We're now at fifteen H, resolution establishing a model city of Huntsville taxpayer, taxpayer installment agreement.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, Ms. Sergeant.
Yes, this is the resolution that ties back to the ordinance at thirteen D. This resolution allows for the city to enter into installment agreements, and it establishes a model agreement to be used with these installment agreements. It ensures that all the citizens are treated exactly the same and equally so that we don't have a situation where somebody can come in and say, "Well, I wasn't handled the same way in my installment agreement as anyone else was." And the agree, the model agreement is attached to this resolution.
Any further discussion, council? Ms., Ms. Sergeant, so, what I'm hearing then, we've kind of had, I guess for lack of a better description, just kind of left it up to you guys, finance, to reach some kind of amicable agreement with the taxpayer. So, this, what is different about what we're doing now? I guess I'm missing something.
This actually just formalizes our process so that it is defined in a resolution so that a citizen can find it. The process actually was uniform to all the citizens. It was a twelve-month agreement, and then at, if there was a financial hardship and one of our taxpayers came in and said, "I'm right at my twelve-month and it's a balloon payment. I want to continue to be here, but I need some, an extension." Per state ordinance, we could give them an additional twelve months if we felt that they were true, that they were going to be able to do it, and we could extend for one additional twelve months following state. And so, this just puts that into a formal document so that they can go pull it if they wanted to and see that that is what everybody gets.
And you, your department will be able to do this primarily absent the council's approval up to that point?
Yes. Installment agreements are arranged in our department almost weekly, well, monthly. We only come here if we're doing a suspension.
Okay.
And that's when things have gotten beyond the installment process.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sergeant. Any further discussion, council? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen I is a resolution authorizing the city of Huntsville to conduct a condemnation proceeding for the acquisition of certain property for the Stone Crossing Apartment Access Road Project brought by the city attorney. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, Mr. Davis or Mr. Riley?
Council members, I'm happy to handle this. This is a capital improvement project at the northwest corner of, uh, Jordan Lane and University Drive. It actually accesses to Jordan Lane. There's a, a private drive, if you will, that's being used by multiple businesses. It needs to be a public road so all these businesses up through there can have legal access. So, they're using it every day. It's already paved. We would just be doing some overlay and putting some, some street lighting. So, the current owner has agreed to sell it to us at a nominal fee, but it is attached to a current mortgage, and the only way to get that release is through a condemnation effort. So, if there is such thing, it's a friendly condemnation, so we're asking you to ratify that so we can move forward.
So, that is in the district that I'm so blessed to represent, so my phone isn't gonna blow up tomorrow?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number twenty-one to the supplemental development agreement, tip five series twenty-ten dash A, between the city of Huntsville and LW Redstone Company LLC brought by the city attorney. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, Mr. Riley? Fifteen K.
This is simply a modification of an agreement, and then it ties in with N down here where basically the money for authorized, or that, for that modification is being tied in, so...
So, if we approve K, then...
Then we would be in position to go forward with N.
Okay. All right, sir. Any further discussion, council? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Miller and Miller, Inc., for EUL weep hole repairs, Lake F project number seventy-one dash sixteen, Sarah Papa fifty-one brought by Engineering.
Move to approve?
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, Ms. Martin.
Yes, Mr. President. This is a construction contract with Miller and Miller to grow out existing weep holes in Lake F to make them watertight in the culvert. It is a contract price of three thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen S is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number two for the preliminary engineering right-of-way acquisition, utility, and construction between the state of Alabama and the city of Huntsville regarding the following projects, US seventy-two East improvements from Maisville Road to Shields Road, South Memorial Parkway, Martin Road, Bird Spring, Lily Flag, Frontage Road, and Main Line improvements, improvements for US seventy-two West at County Line Road intersection, North Memorial Parkway, Maston Lake Road improvements, and interchange at SR two fifty-five, Research Park Boulevard improvements brought by planning. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, this is an amendment to our current Restore Roads agreement with the Alabama Transportation and Governor Bentley. What this supplement would do, should you approve, it adds us to split the cost for our Benroya Lane Connector that greatly to assist South Huntsville in the construction of the Memorial Parkway Project. It adds a connector road to Stallworth Drive for North Huntsville for the upcoming overpass, northern, uh, North Huntsville overpasses that will benefit both police and fire precincts as well as A and M University to access the Parkway. And then, the seventy-two west project, it's such a large project, has many right-of-way parcels to acquire. We would be breaking up the County Line Road and US seventy-two intersection and taking it out as a separate project and accelerating that. It's one of the choke points along seventy-two, and we want to advance that project much more quickly than the entire length from Providence Main to County Line Road. And then, we will be adding a brand-new project to the Restore Roads, and it will be six-laning of Research Park Boulevard from Redstone Arsenal to just north of University Drive. So, should you approve this, you know, we had an agreement of two hundred and fifty million dollars worth of road work within the city limits of Huntsville, split fifty-fifty. These projects would bring the total to just a little over two hundred and thirty-nine million dollars worth of active projects. With about ten million dollars remaining, we will let the, most of these projects get into construction to see if there's any budget left to add an additional project.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Davis, can you give us the status, the right-of-way purchases for the Maston Lake overpass?
Yes, sir, I can. Councilman Showers, appraisals are starting. You have received some phone calls, I guess, the last town hall meeting that you had. You know, we attended a couple, or answered a couple of questions from some citizens who had come to your town hall meeting. That will continue for the next couple of months, and then they will start some offers probably late fall. So, we're still on track for letting in early twenty-seventeen. The project's still on track. There's not a lot of right-of-way to buy for the, the North Huntsville project, so it should go fairly quickly, but we're still currently on schedule and on budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Clean.
I think we're all glad to see these projects. All these are well-needed projects. It goes without saying. I guess I just want to wave a flag about if something can be done. I think the northern bypass eventually is going to connect on to the eastern bypass out by Hampton Cove, and I'd like to see that moved as, as fast as possible because I think that would take a large amount of congestion that goes into the medical district. And I know it's a pipe dream, but I guess somewhere along the line, we're going to have a, a southern bypass that probably by itself will be over a hundred million dollars for that one segment. But, you know, I think we can get a ring road or system around the city that, that would really help some of these real congested areas.
And, and Councilman Clean...
These are all good projects you got, and I'm glad to support them.
Yes, and, and you make a very good point, Councilman Clean. One section of the northern bypass, Mark Look King Extension, is a Restore Roads project. The section from US seventy-two to Memorial Parkway is in the capital plan, and you will see that as we bring the budget to you funding.
That's getting closer, that's getting closer to Hampton Cove, so that's...
A, absolutely. It brings our total, if you remember, council members, we started with five projects with the Restore Roads. This takes it to a total of nine current projects. The contract with, with the state of Alabama runs till twenty-nineteen. The last project is currently scheduled to start construction in twenty-eighteen. So, we have a year buffer with agreement to get all these projects on the ground. So, we feel very confident that, or with our agreement and commitment that everything will do as we said it would do.
It's, I know it's kind of early yet, but has there been any contact with Montgomery as far as another five-year plan agreement?
May I ask?
That may be premature.
Uh, Mr. Clean, right now it is very, very premature. You know, that will probably take us into next administration, and we'll, we'll be dealing with probably a, a next administration on that one. The, we have been to see the highway director and talked to him about, about numerous things, numerous things, and he is very agreeable in working with us in several different capacities. Uh, everything from lights out at, uh, Greenbrier Parkway and five sixty-five to, um, hel, helping us move faster and, and quicker on, um, South Parkway on the overpasses there because we're ahead of schedule, uh, down to even looking at, you know, uh, possible, uh, federal help as, as we go through this election, uh, cycle here. So, uh, we're working all the way, we're working with them as closely as possible, and the next round will, will be in a couple of years that we'll be ready to look at this.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Thank you, Mr. Clean. Thank you, Mr. Davis. And just to get us back on track, we're only voting on the items assumed under fifteen S, and Mayor, I just want to compliment you and your administration for being proactive as it relates to our infrastructure job, uh, great job. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen W is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the document identified as notice of change of control and consent course, Inc., brought by Urban Development.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, Mr. Harrison Diamond.
Harrison Diamond from administration. Basically, this form, uh, admit, um, what it means is that Curse is a company that's located in downtown. They moved their headquarters from, uh, San Francisco area. They were purchased by Twitch, which is a, a video-sharing company owned by Amazon. This form basically acknowledges that Twitch did acquire Curse, and it's a requirement, uh, that we need to sign this so that, um, the incentives that the state gave can go through to Twitch. So, it's just basically acknowledging that they told us that, uh, Twitch bought Curse.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond.
Curse was bought by Twitch, who is part of Amazon. Is that right?
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. Thank you, Mayor Battle. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. And council members, we do not have any vacation of easements, right-of-ways, deeds for acceptance, routine bond satisfaction or liquid mortgage. I do want to share with you, council, before we get to non-roster communications from the public, there's a card upstairs. If we get a chance to sign it, you'll know what it's for. Thank you. And now we're at agenda item number seventeen, non-roster communications from the public. You'll state your name and address for the record for three minutes to address the council.
I can read, Jack Coleman Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
I've had a change of heart.
Yes, ma'am.
The people have spoke. Mayor Battle, I'd keep you. I could work with you. The people spoke and put you in office, so I was just trying to get your attention and tell you all, hey, quit working for the big developers. Get your minds on the public, these roads, these empty buildings, and employees want a five percent raise, and I'm here to help them. So, it's up to you all. That's what I was trying to get your attention. So, Mayor Battle, I can work with you, but I'm probably gonna stay on you, 'cause I asked God after the election of the night, you want me to just quit and not go back anymore? Or you want me to kick 'em around twice as bad? What do you think he said? So, look out. I'm here to guard you. I appreciate you. I would like for whoever knows about that property that you all bought last time and how much you paid for it, and I'm gonna tell you how much I love you, but we'll, thank you, Mr. Cover, for what you do about making them answer my questions. But I never could find out from Mr. Clean, those two properties you bought when I wasn't here. Will you tell the public, the two you bought, where you bought 'em, how much you paid for? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Uh, Mayor, if you want to address that, I'm not sure if I remember which two properties Ms. Reed is referring to, but it's supposedly two properties that we bought during her absence, which is very rare, and how much did we pay for those properties?
And, and, Ms. Reed, could I, could I say, uh, thank you for your comments? I was a little worried.